Good morning. We will call the meeting to order Wednesday, July 24th. And we will open with an invocation and then a pledge of allegiance. If you'll please join us and then we'll go into the minutes.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to represent the citizens of our city. Please give each of us an open heart and mind to make the right decisions and to better understand the needs of our city, that this community can go forward with love for our fellow citizens. We ask that you bless this country, Lord, that the people of this nation will seek a kinder and more gentle nation in the days ahead. Bless all those who are in need today, Lord. In your name we pray and the people said, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have the minutes from the May 22nd in the June 12th meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by Warren. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, we will come down and do a service award for a very special person. Juan Lideras is a crew leader at the Parks Department. Would you come forward, sir? Come have a picture with all of us. Do you have 30 more years left? Come on, let's do it. You've done a great job. Thank you. Z1, please.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This first item is a request from residential to planned unit residential. The applicant is requesting this change to allow for the development of two detached single-family homes. To the north, east, and south are all developed with single-family homes. To the west is zoned for R2, two-family and single-family, R1B, and is developed with single-family homes. The future land use identifies this area as single-family, medium-low density. The request is consistent with our future land use guide, and the proposal provides infill development in this neighborhood. The site plan shows the residence will be built facing each other to create an internal arrangement, as you can see here on the site plan. There will be no driveway access to Baxter. Of the 35 notices mailed, zero returned in favor or in opposition to this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends this by a 5-0 vote.
Questions of Heather? We have no cards on this item, so...
Move to approve Z1.
Motion by Warren.
Second.
Second by Westbrook. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and thank you very much. Z2?
This is a request to change the zoning to allow for a development of 50 town homes. To the north and east is zoned agricultural, as you can see in the green coloring, and are developed with single-family homes and a vacant lot. To the south is R2, two-family and PMF, and is developed with duplexes. And to the west is zoned for R2 with duplexes. The future land use guide would need to be amended to a townhouse, garden, apartment, and the applicant is proposing to develop 50 town home units at a density at just about nine units per acre. This density, which is consistent with the existing pattern of development in this area, is also adjacent to the R2, two-family zoning that I mentioned, and that is at a density at 11.6 units per acre. And the PMF, the Planned Multifamily, is at 10.5 units per acre. The town homes will be located on a single lot with each unit accessed via a private drive. The development will be gated and have a six-foot tall wooden fence. The maximum height of the structures will be 42 feet, which is consistent with single-family homes, and the setbacks are 15 feet in the front, 10 feet in the rear, and 10-foot side and 15-foot between the structures. The development will also provide for a common space area in exchange for reduced setbacks and yards. One letter was returned in opposition to the request, and their opposition was concerned that this would be for apartment-style units. However, this is for town homes. Of the 22 notices mailed, zero were returned in favor, one, as I mentioned, in opposition, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 6-0 vote recommends approval. And the agent is here to speak on this item if there are questions.
Any questions of Heather? There is a representative from Brent Bradbury. If you have any questions of him? Okay, having no questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve Z2.
Second.
A motion by Westbrook, a second by Sellers. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Z3?
This is a request by Tyler Jr. College to rezone from single-family to institutional to allow for campus office uses and associated parking. To the north and west are developed with single-family homes. To the east is zoned institutional and single-family and is the location of Tyler Jr. College facilities and a single-family home. To the south is zoned for multifamily and single-family and is the location of student housing and single-family homes. This is consistent with the future land use guide that identifies this area as high-density mixed-use, and the applicant plans to convert the existing residences to office space with required parking lots for Tyler Jr. College. The zone change request aligns with the recommendations that were outlined in the midtown area development plan, and of the 14 notices mailed, two were returned in favor, zero in opposition, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 6-0 vote recommends approval.
Questions of Heather? We do have two cards. I believe they'll be available for questions only on this one. So are there any questions?
No.
Okay.
Exciting for me to see TJC continue to grow. I move to approve Z3.
Second.
Motion by Warren, a second by McKeller. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Z4?
This is a request to change the zoning to allow for a multifamily development. As you can see, a lot of green on the map here. It is agricultural and undeveloped, and to the east is also agricultural and single-family homes. This would amend the future land use guide from single-family, medium-low density, to multifamily. The property is located along East Grande Boulevard, which is a major arterial street. The applicant is proposing a multifamily development, and the RMF zoning allows for a maximum of 24 units per acre. Of the 13 notices that were mailed, there were one returned in opposition at a 19.15% protest, and the opposition stated that the zone change is not consistent with the surrounding area. However, properties along East Grande Boulevard are zoned with a mixture of commercial, industrial, and multifamily, as well as the agricultural districts that have yet to see development to this date. However, there is that mixture of zoning districts and high intensity as far as the industrials. So we do see this as an appropriate zoning request for this area, and of the 13 notices mailed, zero were returned in favor. The Planning and Zoning Commission by a 6-0 vote recommends approval.
We do have Mark Prechner here for questions, if there are questions.
You know, it's buildable land. It's right on Grande. It's going to be developed, and so I think that this is best use for that piece of property. And so therefore, I move to approve Z4.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Z5?
This is a request to change zoning from industrial to commercial, and the applicant is requesting this to allow for commercial uses on this property. To the north is zoned for single-family homes and is developed as such. To the east is planned commercial development and multifamily, and it is undeveloped and there's also an assisted living facility. To the west is a mixture of C1 and C2 commercial, and it has retail uses. To the south is the Family Dollar, also commercial. This is consistent with the future land use guide that identifies this area as neighborhood commercial, as you can see in the pink color adjacent to the subject property. The applicant is requesting to downzone this property from industrial to commercial to allow for a gas station and restaurant. Of the 18 notices mailed, zero returned in favor or in opposition to this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 6-0 vote recommends approval.
Just curious, do you know what's going in there? People keep asking me.
The representative is here, and they may be able to shed a little bit more light.
Mr. Breedlove, do you want to come up?
You got a Topgolf going in there or anything kind of cool?
That'd be nice, wouldn't it? Bob Breedlove, Brandon Corporation, 1321 South Broadway. Currently, they're looking at a gas station, restaurant, and maybe a medical dock-in-the-box type building.
But they don't have any current tenants, really?
No.
They're just a development plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just curious. Thanks.
Any other questions? Shirley, do you want to make a motion in favor of that?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept the proposal.
Great. So, a motion by McKeller, a second by Warren for Z5. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. R1?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
We're just riding a high at parks. All these ribbon cuttings. Now we have a new Parks and Open Space Master Plan. We're just going to keep on going. So we're excited today because we have had the opportunity in-house to look at our Parks and Open Space Master Plan. It was done 10 years ago. Mark Spencer, if you remember, with MHS did that plan for us. We weren't able to find the funds to do the update, but we had some staff in-house that was able to work on it, and so we're excited to bring that before you today. The reason, the most important reason for us, obviously, is because parks and open space plans are important. You need to know where you're going in the next 10 to 20 years. But really, it also gives us a competitive edge when we're applying for grants. We haven't been able to apply for Texas Parks and Wildlife grants because our plan has been outdated, so this provides us the opportunity to become competitive with other cities because we do have this plan. The other thing I want to mention is Caitlin Stowe, who's actually leaving the city, but our Aggie, Ed, you'll appreciate that, she's done a great job with this project and has really stepped up. It's her first position out of college, so I really appreciate her and the park staff because they worked tirelessly on this project. So I'll jump right in. I just want to go through some of the details, but we had a lot of public input. We did, we kicked this off in March. We did a citizen survey online. I will say, when we did this project with the consultant, we did a letter back in the day, that was 10 years ago. We did a letter that was strategically sent out to different districts, and so we would, to try to get a good mix of feedback, but I'll talk a little bit about that later. We feel like we still got a good mix even though we did the survey online. But we went and visited the Glass Recreation Center, put the survey out, bid at the senior center, took it to our corporate challenge, a lot of our other events, our Tyler cleanup, our Easter egg hunt, really trying to get a good cross-section of our community so that we could have some good public involvement in this plan. We did some other public meetings that I'll share with you in a little bit. Just to hit the highlights of the survey, we had 985 responses, which is almost exactly what we had 10 years ago. 51% of the population that really answered the questions were very satisfied or satisfied with how they felt about our existing parks and facilities, and over 96% were very satisfied or satisfied when they asked if Parks and Recreation is worth it to the taxpayer. The other thing I want to hit is where did these surveys come from? Where was, what geographic location of the city? So I have the 2019 in that pie there, but the 2009 results you'll see on the right, you can see that almost exactly the same district areas, northwest, southwest, northeast, and the southeast quadrant answered in almost the same percentages, which we found really interesting, but just to give you a geographic location of where the responses were from. Also, I want to go over, you know, a big change that happened in the survey. When we asked them their current age, 2009, 13% of them were 18 to 34, and in this survey, 39% were in the 18 to 34 category. So a big change in the age group there that responded. Although you'll see there was an age group difference, you won't see the priorities change all that much. Another highlight here, this is where we get into, you know, what facilities would you like to have in this city? In 2009, that's on the left, 2019, of course, is on the right. Not a lot changed here. The only thing that really kind of dropped off in 2009 was Rec Center, but you still see multi-use trails, nature trails, swimming pool at the top of the list, and then the playground and water features. Not a lot, again, has changed on what the community is still saying they would like in their Parks and Recreation system. On question 17, the most important consideration regarding future parks. Now this kind of, these really stayed the same but became very prevalent throughout not only the survey but even in our public involvement, where the people came and filled out surveys and talked to us in person. But they're concerned about, of course, quality of the facilities and maintenance, and you'll see the preservation of natural area, that hasn't changed, and then the number of facilities. So really, the top five in the last 10 years stayed pretty much the same. In our public input, as I mentioned, we did the survey. We did have an athletic survey. I want to touch on that for a minute. We sent a survey out, the same one that we did 10 years ago, to all our athletic groups, and not a lot of growth, we are not seeing a lot of growth in our youth sports. So there was a slight growth, but not enough for us to really say, okay, we've got to add a substantial amount of fields. What we need to do is continue to talk to our athletic groups about how do we build that, and if we want to look at adding numbers to their youth groups, then we'll look at, do we need more fields? But that hasn't happened in the last 10 years, so I just wanted to touch on that. We did have, like I said, the public meetings, and there were various things that came up, but the common theme that I want to mention is really looking at, you know, taking care of our existing parks. We have a lot of great parks facilities, but maintaining those and upgrading those became one of the common themes in those meetings. Also, really looking at summaries of taking care of our multipurpose trails and adding those. You saw that in the survey, you saw that in the public meeting. So when you look at this, all this information is really pointing in the same direction, so that's where we begin to build on the implementation plan. The other thing I wanted to touch on is the demographic update. Some of the categories have changed with the census, and then we'll do the 2020 census, obviously, next year, but the demographics, as far as the white, non-Hispanic, obviously has decreased. Hispanic has increased, as you see there on the estimates. African-American has also increased. Now I want to point your attention to the senior citizen population. That has actually decreased in our community, which was a little bit of surprise, but again, these are estimates, so that'll be confirmed in the 2020 census, but we only had this information to use moving forward. Our goals and objectives stayed pretty much the same because, obviously, we didn't hear a lot of new information from our citizens. We did add one goal and objective because we continue to have this conversation about renovate existing parks and making sure that we maintain the quality of our existing facilities, so we did add that. The other thing we added was to continue to partner with our local youth organizations to provide athletic facilities. There are so many fields that the city doesn't own, but they're provided by, whether it be churches or other private-public partners, so just to continue to build those relationships. So those were the new objectives. The accomplishments from our last plan, I just want to go through those real quick. We did a number of different master plans that came out of our previous Parks and Open Space Master Plans. We've done the Rose Garden, the Rose Complex, Hillside Park, and Bergfeld Park, all of which plans have been implemented, and so we've had construction at all of those facilities, at least Hillside and Bergfeld. And then we did do the Rose Garden National Historic Register, and we'll have an event for that later on in the year. Just another rundown of some additional projects. Waldorf Park was upgraded, Faulkner Park, Hillside, as I mentioned. So we did take a lot of items from our previous plan and move them to implementation. So to get into what's in the plan now for implementation schedule, we started thinking about, okay, do we really want to get into 20 years? Why don't we try to stick this with a 10-year horizon for this plan? And so we started looking at what is the existing projects that we pulled out from the old plan, and some of those you've heard about, Russ, who's done a great job bringing those projects forward and finding funding through Keep Tyler Beautiful. So a lot of those projects are still carried over in this plan. Rehabbing Fund IV is making sure the swimming pool is working because that is one of the top five that we heard from the citizens. Looking at upgrading Lindsey Park, again, another item that we've heard a lot from the citizens and really needs to happen. It's got a lot of aging infrastructure. Continue the final phase of Bergfeld Park, so there's only one more left, the tennis court area, so we're excited about that. Gasaway, that Russ has really been working on, and including an item here of reforestation, so looking at our other parks facilities and figuring out, do we need this land to be, you know, are we constantly having to mow it, or can we reforest it and turn it back to its natural state, because we do have a lot of acreage in many of our parks. Moving on to Legacy Trail, extension of Legacy Trail, which is actually the next item, so I'll talk about that at that point, but we want to keep that in the plan to make sure that if we need to apply for additional funds from Parks and Wildlife, it's carried over in this plan as well. The other thing we're going to look at is some general items. We did an overall priority study for maintenance of our facilities about five years ago in 2015, and it's time to update that plan. So we added that item, which is to really look at those priorities in all of our different parks and decide which is the best moving forward, which has the highest, medium, and lowest priority. So just updating that plan. Another thing I want to talk about is adding another trail system, which would take the trail from the Rose Garden to downtown. And so we're really interested in making sure that we're carrying that legacy trail all the way to the center of town. That's been the plan, the long-term plan for many years. The other thing I wanted to mention, let me back up here. One of the things on Rose Rudman, we've had a lot of discussion about Rose Rudman and needing to do some creek stabilization on that trail, so that's added to the plan so that we can look at opportunities for a grant match on that. Another thing we wanted to add to the plan is to really look at unifying all of our facilities so that when we have benches and trashcans and even when they're donated, that they have a unified look, and so that that way our parks have just consistency when we're taking those donations or adding new facilities. Lastly, we've had some conversation about constructing a new senior center, constructing a new recreation center. We did just continue to carry that over in the plan as something that would be studied in the future if there is a need for that. And I really, you know, think this stages us for applying for a good urban outdoor grant this year in December and then possibly in February as well. So this does set the stage for those grant applications to be able to leverage our dollars that we have budgeted now. And then finally, we took this to the Parks Board, actually, on Monday, and they did unanimously approve the plan, but they wanted to continue to have us highlight the addition to the implementation schedule, that the city will actively pursue those public-private partnerships to enhance the level of service that we have in our parks facilities. So with that, we're just asking today that you all approve the plan. If you have any questions, we can answer those, and then approve the resolution that's required by Parks and Wildlife. We'll send this plan on to them. They'll have about 30 days to review it, and then hopefully we'll get feedback from them at that point.
Great. Any questions?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Will that legacy project ever make it to North Tyler, or will it stop at downtown Tyler?
We have other trail plans in place for North Tyler. Most of those are along the creek north of Glass Recreation Center. Some of that, we've tried to get grants for, but we've had some issues with funding because of the floodplain and the bridges needed and that kind of thing, but all of that is in the future plan.
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah. I like what you're doing because it involves creative fundraising, you know, and we do all these public-private partnerships with donations and all that, which are fabulous. But sometimes I think maybe we don't tap enough of these federal and state grants, and so I'm excited that this will be a tool that will enable us to do it. You know, the other thing that I like about this plan is we get into master plans for each individual park, and I think these master plans, as we've done at Bergfeld Park, they've got to be achievable. I mean, there's nothing worse than doing these master plans, and they're not achievable, and you put them in a closet somewhere and you never do them. So I like what we're doing as far as we're doing phases, we're going to do, it's achievable, we can accomplish it. So I like where you're going with it. I think it's a good plan. So with all that said, I'd love to move to approve R1.
Motion by Warren. Any other questions or a second?
Second.
Second by McGee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all very much for your hard work on that project. R2?
Okay. So as I spoke a little bit earlier about Legacy Trail, this is the opportunity, and we just had the ribbon cutting this week, to look at the next phase, moving this trail north. So we've been meeting with Brandon Corporation, I think they're still here. They've been very helpful. We've gone into their office and looked at the maps and figured out where are we going to take this trail. A lot of it will be along the rail corridor, but this is really just a resolution that we're asking council to approve so that we can make application for the grant, because again, a resolution is required for us to do that. But I want to talk about the route. It starts at Home Depot because Old Jacksonville Highway from Home Depot south down to Grande is going to be widened, as you all know, so we have to leave that piece out for now, but this would take the trail from Home Depot up the rail corridor, as you can see on the map, so we're moving north, again, following that rail corridor until we get over to 155. At that point, we had to continue north to Earl Campbell Parkway. So we had to hit Earl Campbell Parkway at that large signal intersection, plus it has some very good medians there that protect pedestrians as they move across, so we felt like we wouldn't have to upgrade that signal. Once we did that, we continued then to move up Old Noonday Road. The best part is, when we got up to Old Noonday Road, if you look there on the portion of West Fifth Street, we had two options. We could continue up Old Noonday Road, or we have an old alley corridor that's wooded in that location, so we could do the trail north there. So we have that proposed in that alley corridor. It's nice and flat, it's ready to go, so that makes a huge difference because we always like to have trails where we can get off-road as much as we can, so that provides another opportunity for us, and then, of course, it will loop back around. But then we take it north, and we end up moving up to Peach Park, which we know is Peach Park, but it's really been renamed to Winters. We take the trail through Winters Park, and that then becomes a trailhead for the facility, and ultimately getting it up to P Elementary. Once we meet P Elementary, we would have to go on-street with a bike lane, which that proposal was already in the Act of Tyler Plan, so that would take us across the railroad. West Houston is a very wide street. We're going to be doing some traffic calming and things probably in the future, so hopefully that can be worked through the plan and then reach the Rose Garden. So because this is a safe routes-to-school project as well, that gets us to P Elementary, which means all of those elementary kids could potentially ride their bike or walk to school, which would be great. So that's really the proposal for the route. Brandon Corporation's going to work on the plans. If we do get the grant, it'll be about a $4 million grant with the city participating about a million and a half. But the schedule... But the schedule, we have to submit the grant in August, and we hope to hear back December.
So this is a similar timeframe as the original?
The build grant. Oh, yeah.
Legacy trail that we went through. About the same dollar amount as well, right?
Yeah. Same mileage as well. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. It's about four miles, a little, maybe a little over four, depending on what we can get, once we get up there.
So could we go back down to the southern part of the trail? Tell me again where the trailhead we opened this week, there'll be, will it go from that, from fresh to?
Unfortunately, we can't do that, so we had to start it at Home Depot. And the reason we can't is because TechDOT's going to be working on widening Old Jacksonville Highway, basically from Grande all the way up to...
So there's no way to incorporate that?
Well, we've talked to TechDOT about that, and we're continuing to push that the city would like for them to help us at that point just widen the sidewalk to be an additional trail corridor and to connect. But we definitely are working with them to make sure that they understand that that's important to us. Or if there's a need to oversize, and the city would cover the oversize of that. So we have been talking to them about it.
So it's not a dead issue?
No. No, it's not.
Yeah, as part of the design, because with Old Jacksonville, they're going to be pushing to the east. And we had intended for the old railroad line that went through there to be where then this would continue to connect then between Grande and the Loop. With their need to go east, they are now eating into that railroad, old railroad area and trail. And so we are having discussions to see. First, our first was, would you have to build a sidewalk, it's part of state requirements? Would you then just go ahead and incorporate the trail into your designs for the Old Jacksonville piece? But because of how far east they're pushing into the Old Jacksonville corridor, it may just end up being a sidewalk that's there, but we'll continue to negotiate with them.
So will TechDOT acquire, or can they acquire the easements when they're doing their widening to accomplish the trail?
They won't do it in probably a trail capacity, as much as we will continue to see what they can do in order to be able to meet their requirements for a sidewalk. But they do have to provide a sidewalk along the, after they've expanded Old Jacksonville.
And one thing we've been doing as well, I want to mention with Heather and her team and the MPO, is Active Tyler shows that to be a trail corridor, to continue legacy trail all the way north. So the idea then would be that they continue to push that project as well through their MPO avenue or planning efforts with TechDOT.
Well, I like the eventual outcome also, too. Saw that it gets very close to the Rose Garden Center, and we do have one of those projects that is gathering a little dust at the moment that'll hopefully be resurrected to do the Rose Garden master plan to continue that trail into that complex. So excited about that.
Is that a motion?
And I'll make a motion to approve R2.
Okay. It's a motion from Westbrook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. So we have a hearing. Do I need to gavel this into a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
On the fiscal year 2019 to '20 Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs and Action Plan.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager.
Parker Harrison, our Community Development Block Grant Manager, will be providing more detail in regards to the public hearing. He will also detail the budget in regards to the activities and the programs as well and the next steps following the public hearing.
Great.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager. In accordance with the HUD Regulations 24 CFR 91.105, the grant team must hold at least two public hearings a year to obtain citizen views and response to proposals and questions in regards to the action plan. HUD for 2019-20 has allocated $864,656 to the Community Development Block Grant Funds and $347,216 to the Home Investment Funds, with a total of $1,211,872. So the programs that we're looking at funding for next year will be our administration. That'll help cover the CDBG and home programs. Our clearance and demolition of at least 25 structures. Our public facility projects, we have two, or the completion of the TJ Austin Elementary Sidewalk Project and the infrastructure for streets, water taps, sewer for 22 lots near the new fire station on Gentry Parkway. We also have the first-time homebuyer program, which we're hoping to use those funds to help five to six households. The new construction program for low, moderate-income households of at least two households there. And then we have some set aside for the Community Housing Development Organization that's required by home funds. Staff is requesting that the City Council conduct a public hearing to obtain citizen comment for the FY 1920 CEBG and Home Investment Program Action Plan.
Thank you. Were there any comments related to the Housing Choice Voucher Program? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Fiscal year 2019 to '20 Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs and Action Plan. Is there any comment?
So which fund does the, do the sidewalks come out of?
CEBG.
Which one of these, though?
Oh, the third one down. We've already set aside funds from previous years. When we got our bids back, it was a little bit higher than what we had expected. So we're needing to cover the difference with next year's funds.
But that's the one where Ed?
Yes, sir.
Was able to?
Gotcha.
Yep, and that was Ed's.
Do you want to go into a little bit on the public facilities piece, on the implementation, the first stage of that that we're doing for the coming year?
For next year, once the fire station is complete, there's some land behind it off of Queen Street and Palace that we're going to look at redeveloping for about 22 single-family lots. We'll put in, I believe, two roads and then all the infrastructure, water, sewer, and all the taps for those individual lots.
And so when those lots will be available for the public to purchase?
Yes. Those lots will be available for public to purchase, contractors to build affordable homes on.
Right. So part of the idea that I recall on this item was that is a way to get the private sector involved in creating some affordable housing instead of us just trying to work on us two per year.
Right.
This engages the private sector?
Correct.
To be involved with us.
So what we plan to do is have this project over the next five years. We want to head and implement public facility funds to start the project for, as you mentioned, the streets, the curbs, and the gutter. However, we do have home funds already set aside from previous years, and the city will go in and we'll build the first six homes with home funds to engage other contractors to come in and start building new construction.
Good. Okay.
And this has been a project that has been underway for, I think it may even precede you, Mayor, it was you as a council member?
No, it was me as a council member with a few others, yes. So it's about eight years to nine years in discussion, yeah.
Would the neighborhood then still be developed as detached, single-family, or is that up for review at the time that those roads are installed?
It'll be just using single-family.
Any other questions? And hearing no public comment on this item? Yes, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak relating to fiscal year 2019 to 2020 Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs and Action Plan? Seeing no community members moving forward to discuss this item, thank you all very much for implementation. And at this time, we're closing the public comment hearing.
So our next step?
Are we going to O1? Or do we need, is there another item?
No, we'll present the adopting this annual action plan at the next meeting.
O1, okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Let me clarify that it's going to be August 14th, when he will present the annual action plan, the final draft, and then we'll approve that.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
This is another.
This is another action item, O1, so now we're back at city council meeting, and we're looking at ordinance O1.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Prentice Butler, our Housing Choice Voucher Manager, will come up and he will present the 1920 Housing Annual Action Plan.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, City Manager.
Good morning.
Each year, our department is tasked with amending and updating our annual plan. We receive comments and suggestions from Neighborhood Services personnel in addition to our residential advisory board, which is actually comprised of Housing Choice Voucher participants and family self-sufficiency participants. We also receive comments and input from the public during the 45-day comment period. Once we receive all the comments and suggestions, we consolidate those into the annual plan, and we present that to the city council and to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for approval. The purpose of the annual plan is to outline strategies for addressing the needs of low-income families, and it also serves as an outline as to how we will actually administer the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Our projected budget for fiscal year 2019 to 2020 is approximately $7.4 million, of which $672,000 will be allocated toward administrative fees and costs, and $6.8 million towards the housing assistant payments to our landlords. To determine program eligibility, we are mandated to use HUD's income limits, which are based on the size of the household and also based on their gross annual income. There are five programs that are offered through Neighborhood Services Department: the Housing Choice Voucher Program, our Tenant Protection Program, our Family Self-Sufficiency Program, Home Ownership, and our Veteran Affairs Supportive Housing Program. Our Housing Choice Voucher Program, basically the goal is to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing to low- to moderate-income individuals. Currently, we have three eligibility specialists that have approximately 300 cases that they manage each day, and we have a total of 1,008 vouchers that are actually allocated to the City of Tyler. Currently, we have zero families on the waiting list, and we anticipate opening the waiting list before the 1st of next year, January 2020. Our Tenant Protection Program is a program designed to reassign families that may be in danger of losing their voucher in situations where there are issues with public housing properties. So HUD will actually assign these vouchers to different areas in order for the participant to maintain their participation in the program. Currently, HUD has assigned the City of Tyler eight families to be assisted through the Tenant Protection Program. Our Family Self-Sufficiency Program is a program designed to help our current Housing Choice Voucher participants transition to self-sufficiency. The primary goal of this program is to focus on employment. Of the 40 families that we have currently enrolled in the program, 27 are actively employed. Our Home Ownership Program is a program that allows our Housing Choice Voucher participants to utilize their voucher subsidy towards homeownership, towards mortgage, as opposed to using it to rent. We have served 26 families through the Home Ownership Program, and currently, we have 10 families that are participating in the program. Our Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Program is a partnership between HUD and the Department of Veteran Affairs. We have 34 dedicated vouchers to assist with our homeless veterans. As of right now, we're serving 26 veterans, and these vouchers are actually filled through referrals from the VA. HUD Section 8 Management Assessment Program is actually HUD's measuring tool to monitor the progress of the Housing Choice Voucher Program and how the program is administered. There are 14 key areas that they focus on. And just to give you an example of a few of those areas, they look at reporting, timely reporting. They look at how many families that we have leased up each month, and they also look at inspections of the units that the participants are staying in, making sure that we are inspecting per the housing quality standard guidelines. There are three potential performance ratings. There's a housing authority can receive a high-performance rating, a standard performance rating, or a trouble rating. And over the past 16 years, Neighborhood Services has received a high-performance rating from HUD. So at this time, it's recommended that the City Council adopt the ordinance approving the Housing Choice Voucher Programs fiscal year 2019 to 2020 Annual Plan.
Prentice, I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
I remember when we started the VAS and we had zero vouchers, and now it'd be up serving 26 families. That's awesome.
Thank you.
That's a great improvement. Because I remember, I think we started out with like three or four?
Yes, sir.
And we had no one?
Right, it's a small number, but we've grown over the years.
That's grown. And then the family self-sufficiency, I remember when we started that, and I think we started with one or two families. So now to have 40 families in the program, that's a great benefit as well. And then the waiting list, is it zero?
Yes, sir.
So how's the turnover? Is it turning over then?
It is. The waiting list allows us to pull families that, of course, have been waiting since the initial application process, which I think the last process began in 2014. So we've had families waiting since 2014 to actually obtain a voucher. So we've actually gone through that entire waiting list, and have served either the families that have been waiting, or we've determined that the family no longer needs assistance, and so we've removed them from the waiting list.
Yeah, that's good. Because I think at one point, we had hundreds of people just sitting on the waiting list. So I mean, I think turnover is good, so we can provide the assistance. Well, I say "we." This is, for those that are not familiar with the program, this is fully a federal government program. It's not funded by local tax dollars. So, but the program, I've always felt needed to make sure that we had turnover, so we were serving people when they needed it, but then to move on to hopefully success and reemployment, and then have other families have the opportunity to be served and not to really have long-term people on the program, but just during times of need. So I'm glad to hear that we're working through that. So that's all the comments I have. If anybody else has any questions?
I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the fact that veterans have been taken care of, getting them off the streets. Thank you.
So when you talk about Section 8 housing, an example of that, would that be like the more, the morelofs?
Those are tax credit properties, and we do work with those housing complexes. There's a difference between public housing, of course, the Housing Choice Voucher Program. The public housing is where there's public facilities that are actually owned by HUD. The Housing Choice Voucher Program allows a participant to take their voucher to different places, not only within the jurisdiction, but also from state to state. So they can port from Dallas to Tyler and Tyler to Louisiana or even Chicago. So the Housing Choice Voucher Program allows them to be able to use their voucher at different locations in different areas.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion. We approve your presentation.
Motion from McKeller. Second from McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Prentice.
And Mayor, if I may, also on this one, Ranisha, if you don't mind coming forward. The achievements that you saw under H1 and O1 are, while Prentice and Parker worked very hard on it, Ranisha Hudnall has been a large part of why we see Neighborhood Services be as successful. And this is her last council meeting. She is headed to go work for the City of Waco.
No, I didn't know that.
They're...
No.
They're stealing her away from us, but we are so proud of just what she's achieved, especially as the things that you presented, just presented to you with these items.
If I would've known that, I'd have called the mayor and said, "No."
And just as a, also, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
See, we recently had our assessment from Housing and Urban Development, and they stated as per these items that you just went through and the like, as far as their assessment, that no, as far as, there are no issues, which is hardly ever heard of from HUD. And so we're very proud of the achievement that she and her staff have achieved, as reflected with H one and O one.
Thanks for what you've done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, O two.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's good to be with you again this morning.
Morning.
This is a request from InSafe for an approval of an ordinance for a municipal setting designation. Representing InSafe is professional geologist Ms. Myra Hart. And she's here on behalf of Carrier Corporation. Mayor, if you and the council will allow me just to give a little bit of background. In two thousand and three, legislation was passed authorizing TCEQ, or Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, to receive, process, and certify municipal setting designations. In case you are unaware, the municipal setting designation is a official state designation given to properties within a municipality or its ETJ. This designation certifies that designated groundwater at this property cannot be used for potable water. And potable water, of course, is defined as water used for drinking, bathing, cooking, because this groundwater is considered contaminated in excess of applicable drinking water standards. The legislation passed in two thousand and three prohibits future use. These contained contaminants cannot be used in the future. This indication is controlled locally, and that method of control is in the form of a restricted covenant or ordinance that we are presenting to you today. According to Chapter three sixty-one of the Texas Health and Safety Code, under the Municipal Setting Designation section, municipalities of private water, well owners, and retail public utilities that own or operate a groundwater supply within five miles of the municipal setting designation should be notified. InSafe, on the behalf of Carrier Corporation, has notified the City of Tyler of their intent to apply for the MSD, or Municipal Setting Designation. This designation will address the groundwater contamination at the site. An ordinance is attached that has been reviewed by our legal department and Tyler Water Utilities as we support the municipal setting designation. On July the eighth, a public meeting was held where InSafe took questions and answered them, addressed to public, and there were no objections noted in that meeting. Within five-mile radius, according to TCEQ records, there were about four hundred and sixty-six individual properties that will be notified, provided that city council approved this attached ordinance. These property owners will have up to sixty days to file comments with TCEQ after the notification. The MSD will protect the public health, not affect property owners other than Carrier Corporation, and finally encourage redevelopment. If council has specific questions relating to this, this particular municipal setting designation, InSafe representative is here.
One of the reasons I'm putting this particular map up is to identify the site, and I'm not sure if you can see the elevation lines that are here, but the contaminated groundwater is confined and is not actually sprayed.
I'm Myra Hart. I represent InSafe. I'm here on behalf of Carrier Corporation. The groundwater that is contaminated, there are two plumes. One is confined beneath the facility. The other one is at the southeast corner of the facility. And groundwater beneath the facility flows to the south, towards a vacant, undeveloped property that contains some wetlands and discharges at the, I'm trying to remember the name of that little creek that runs right there.
Right, but that, that.
Black Fort Creek.
In, in the area south of Duckin Street is the location for Delik Refinery, is that correct?
The, south of the, south of the creek is Delik Refinery, yes, farther south.
Further south.
Yeah.
So, I don't get it. So.
We need layman's terms.
Yeah, we do. So, so what's, if there's contaminated water, and Carrier's wanting to get a, apply for an application, an application to do what?
The municipal setting designation, if there is an ordinance in place to restrict the use of groundwater, there is no further action required to address that groundwater. The MSD ensures that there is no exposure to human health through drinking groundwater. That's all it does.
But that has, that has been studied by your firm, is that correct?
Yes.
Limits of the groundwater?
Yes, mhm. There is currently, currently, there are no wells, or this groundwater is not currently used for drinking or any other purposes at the facility. The facility itself is connected to municipal water supply. All the surrounding residential and industrial facilities are connected to municipal water supply, so there is no, there is no immediate exposure, there's no threat to groundwater at this time. The MSD will protect the future use of that groundwater and restrict it from being used for potable purposes.
So as part of their remediation of this property, because of contaminants that leaked into the soil and into kind of the groundwater underneath it, they, as through the state, provides a mechanism to be able to kind of contain that area per the MSD in order to kind of restrict the uses that would happen on the property, particularly in regards to groundwater. And so this is part of their voluntary work that they're doing on it, to, to have that MSD in place for their own remediation processes and work. It does, it restricts the uses that will be on the property, as well as, obviously, we talked about the groundwater underneath it, and the, the non-use of that groundwater for any type of drinking or, well, any type of drinking water that might occur with it.
And the state agency that controls the monitoring is TCEQ?
TCEQ is the one, and this, they have to, as part, so their process really is getting the MSD, is the application to TCEQ. TCEQ decides on the MSD. We, as a water provider for this area, and it's in our CCN, have to say yea or nay to their MSD permit application.
So, has the TCEQ, tell me about their involvement in this. Have they?
The ordinance is just a part of the application.
Oh, to the TCEQ.
To the TCEQ.
So that'd be the final arbitrar.
They will make the final decision, yes, but the ordinance from the city is required for us to proceed with the application.
But, but as I understand, they have been monitoring the groundwater significantly over many years in this entire area.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah.
And is it, I guess it's, it's a mixture of external and internal environmental issues? Or is it mainly external to your side?
I don't understand.
Okay.
I think the answer that you're looking for is internal. The, the issues that were created, the contaminants are due to the site and contained in that area.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
It's not leaching out.
Correct. That's, that is, that is part of the MSD process, is they then, there is kind of annual review, or there is review and reporting on what is the status of that. The intent, I would assume, is that one day, they would have the MSD lifted once all the contaminants are removed and the property is deemed to be completely safe again.
So are the contaminants removed at some point, or does it just nature?
Contaminants, they can be reduced by natural processes, or if there is some other exposure because of the groundwater contaminants, those pathways are addressed under the voluntary cleanup program. The, this ordinance only restricts the use of groundwater for potable purposes.
So you'll still be under requirements by TCEQ?
Yes.
To monitor, maintain?
Yeah, the facility itself is under the voluntary cleanup program under TCEQ, so all of the other affected media, such as soil, air, surface water, sediment, are addressed under the voluntary cleanup program, as well as groundwater.
So our, our vote today is just to allow you to go and check off a box in order to go seek approval from the TCEQ?
Honorable Mayor, it's important to note that none of this contaminated water is reaching the drinking source for the city.
Right. And none of this shifts any of the liability to anybody else?
Can you come say that to the microphone?
Yes, the liability for the, for the environmental issues at the site are on Carrier Corporation.
I move to approve O two.
Second.
Motion by Warren, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. O three?
Thanks for asking a question.
Yeah, that's interesting, right?
Yeah.
We've, we've done this one all the time, so.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager. What we're doing, we are revisiting a resolution that was brought forward by the council on April the tenth.
Right.
In reference to bringing Blue Duck electronic scooters to the City of Tyler. Before you have a packet with items listed inside of it, the resolution was tabled to have a deeper dive into this particular project, to determine the best practices for the City of Tyler. Some of the items that we looked at was determining the best locations for the scooters, not only for the citizens of Tyler, but for also for Blue Duck scooters, for them to be successful within our community. We also looked at issues and concerns on behalf of the citizens, and determining the best practices in reference to ordinances, the different ordinances that we looked at, and establishing feedback from the community. Some of the locations we looked at included all the colleges here in Tyler, Tyler Junior College, Texas College, University of Texas at Tyler, the Downtown Business Arts and Cultural District, and Village at Cumberland Park. I was able to make contact with representatives from each of these locations through phone, as well as email. I kind of explained the process that we're going through. I also linked Blue Duck's website to that email to kind of give them a better idea if I wasn't explaining it correctly. The majority of the concerns that the representatives have, obviously, were the liability issues, the cluttering of the scooters on their particular area, the roadways, the sidewalks, and the safety concerns was, was one of the most important ones. As you see here, the cluttering of the scooter, this is a photograph from San Antonio that I got from a good friend of mine, and they were laid out everywhere. So this, this is what we're trying to prevent here in the City of Tyler. And obviously, to the right, the photograph is the accident of someone on a scooter. When determining best practices, we're keeping with the, in mind, the safety of the citizens of Tyler. So that includes the ordinances, safety requirements, maintenance and operation requirements, parking requirements, data sharing requirements on behalf of the city manager and the staff that worked on this project, and especially the minimization of the city. Some of the requirements that we looked at was the regulation of speed. These scooters run at approximately twenty miles an hour. Obviously, some other safety features. I didn't list all of them, but there's a few of them here. They're not that different from operating a bicycle. You have to have a headlight, a reflector on the rear. A few of the things we threw in was kind of the controversy of whether we allow them on the roadways, or the sidewalks, or both. Right now, there's no regulation of safety equipment as far as helmets, gloves, elbow pads in the law, and we didn't kind of include that either on this, kind of left it as, as is. We did regulate the, the age of the operator of the scooter, also having a driver's license. You have to be at least sixteen years of age and have a driver's license in order to operate the scooter, safety reasons. Another safety requirement would be on behalf of Blue Duck scooters, providing education to the citizens of Tyler on their product. The maintenance and operation of the equipment was big for us. Again, you'll, you'll hear me say the term "safety" a lot, and what's in best interest of the citizens of Tyler. The operation times that we were requesting are from seven AM to eight PM. That provides daylight hours, anything after eight PM, obviously, the risk of injury or, or accidents rise. Establishing landing zones with docking stations. Landing zones are locations that we decide where they, where they are able to put their scooters, but only with docking stations. Obviously, if the city council decides not to have docking stations, that's, that's also a part of it. Having a valid driver's license for the operation, and part of Blue Duck's commitment is to remove scooters that are, for lack of better terms, a nuisance for the City of Tyler. Scooters that are laying on the sidewalks on other people's properties that they're not supposed to be there, they have two-hour minimum window to pick them up. And they're also able to provide a twenty more, a twenty-four-hour customer service hotline to report accidents, concerns, and issues. Some of the parking requirements we looked at was also establishing landing zones, like I mentioned earlier, designated spots to prevent cluttering of the scooters. Another, another issue we kind of looked over was docked and undocked. A docking station is what I would consider a bicycle rack. An undocked scooter is a scooter that you can just lay down on the sidewalk and go about your, your daily business. Also, one of the concerns we have is a rideaway clearance. The majority of the sidewalks in our, our area that we kind of concentrated on was the D-back area. The majority of the con, the sidewalks we have are approximately four feet wide. We're wanting to leave at least a one-foot rule between the scooter and a pedestrian for safety reasons. And it's like I said, the majority of the sidewalks we have here in the City of Tyler, and especially in the downtown business area, are four feet. One of the things that, if passed, Blue Duck would be required to do, would provide the staff who worked on this project, the city manager, whoever else is designated, specific information on a bi-weekly basis, and this information would provide the miles traveled, total rides, accident rates, complaints, and other, other, other data that's desired by the city manager or the staff. the staff members. One of the things we also looked at specifically for this project was where we could have these, these scooters that would not only benefit the City of Tyler, but also provide a safe environment. So we concentrated on the downtown business area. I had Amber Rojas complete a survey of the businesses down there, and as you can see, I believe it's 56% that would like to see them now, and keeping in mind, this is a small portion of that area of the people who voted. I also wanted to kind of share with you some of the injuries and statistics that I was able to find specifically through CDC, and this is out of Austin. Stats based on the 936,000 scooter trips, out of every 100,000 scooter trips, 20 injuries occurred, 15% being brain injuries. And actually see the other stats that are listed that are under severe injuries. And they actually kind of defines what they, what they consider severe injury, broken bones, nerve and tendon, ligament injury, severe bleeding, or organ damage. 55% of these injuries occurred in the street, while 33% occurred on the sidewalk. There have been deaths contributed to scooters, one in France, one in England, and one in Nashville, Tennessee, and that was not long ago. Based on the location that we looked at, specifically downtown, right now, the staff and I feel the downtown area is not suited due to this infrastructure, the sidewalks, the streets, to provide a safe environment for the citizens of Tyler. So right now, at this time, we're recommending the City of Tyler or City Council to not approve the e-scooters brought to the City of Tyler.
At all? On... What about the campuses?
Okay.
Yes, this, this does not pertain to the campuses. These are different entities from the City of Tyler. As I mentioned, I was in contact with TJC and UT Tyler. TJC, they're still keeping their, for lack of a better term, ducks in a row. I spoke to, spoke to Dr. Mejia and their chief of police, and they're still having concerns over a lot of the things I just spoke about, speed, safety issues, and right now, I don't think they're, they're able to do it just yet. UT Tyler seems more of a, a better location because they already have a shared ride program, their bicycles. I spoke to Josh Neves, who's over there, one of their particular, I think he's over there, Student Affairs, and he's more inclined to entertain this idea as opposed to TJC. Texas College, I didn't get a whole lot of feedback from. The, the park at Cumberland, they had the same concerns. I, I don't think they're ready for that either, and that's from their representative. I think probably the best location right now would be UT Tyler, but it doesn't mean that the City of Tyler will not get the downtown area prepared for a product like this. Because right now, we just don't think that it's, it's safe enough for the citizens to operate these vehicles. And you got to, you got to remember, these vehicles are operating at 20 miles an hour whether they're on the street or sidewalk. And that's why we regulated the speed to 15 miles an hour on a sidewalk, 20 miles an hour on the streets. And they can only operate on roadways that have a 35 mile an hour or less speed limit.
Also with Villages of Cumberland, that, so with, as far as large shopping centers like Villages of Cumberland, they would also, per the vote, our recommendation, if they wanted to enter into a contract, they could do it for, within those shopping, kind of that large shopping areas like that.
Yes.
But as our private streets, and so thus it would be confined within that private
We also have a court in favor of O3, Elizabeth Houston. Would you all like to hear from her?
Sure.
And we can ask Billy some questions? Good morning, state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Elizabeth Lawrence Houston. I live in San Antonio, Texas, 209 West Wood Lawn, 78209. I'm vice president of Blue Duck Scooters.
Right.
And happy to be here and finally address this room. I, like I mentioned, I'm from San Antonio. I went to UT Austin. I grew up in San Antonio. My great-grandfather actually started the first restaurant on the River Lock and the boats, and we ran those for many decades. We still run Caserio and run the oldest restaurant in San Antonio, Sheilos, over 100 years old. So my family has a long history of being in real estate business, hospitality. We're very involved with our chamber. I'm young, the board president of our Rotarian Club there, I'm involved with the Library Foundation and deeply rooted there. I saw that our employees began to use e-scooters to get to work. We have a hard time hiring in the downtown area due to overpriced parking and unreliable ways to get to work. We saw this as a really beautiful tool to help connect people to places of work. We also see that in other places, we operate, such as Laredo and Corpus Christi, in various reasons, whether it's connecting people to schools, to work, or places to go have fun. So, why scooters? I saw that a private company could come in and help the needs of a community, done through a partnership. I thought it was a really beautiful tool that didn't mean that the, the cities would have to put funding around, something around this, that we could come in in partnership and help the city resolve these issues. There are some concerns that are brought, have been brought up that I'd love to address. I have, I did meet with the city manager and the chief back in March. I was actually here for a wedding and came in my rehearsal dinner attire and apologized for that. Since then, I've had a hard time working with the city, unfortunately. It seems like they've kind of wanted to do this in a silo, and, and there's a lot of the things that have come up that I wish we could have discussed. I did not know this was coming to a vote in April, or I would have been here. The number of scooters, we are happy to reduce that number of scooters based on what you all want, and we would never come in and bring hundreds of scooters and just drop them off. We would always phase that in. And first and foremost, our area manager, Travis Hunt, is actually from Tyler and knows the area really well. He does, he and I work really well together to look at a map, create suggested deployment sites, run that by the city and by the police to get their approval on where these should be placed. I have a letter from the police chief in the City of Alma Heights that I'd like to read to you. The City of Alma Heights found it necessary to pass an ordinance in response to the uninvited presence of a large volume of dockless scooters appearing overnight on our sidewalks and in our public right-of-ways. It was after the passage of this ordinance, we were approached by Elizabeth Houston representing Blue Duck Scooters. Elizabeth presented us with a professional business model presenting solutions to our concerns regarding citizen accessibility on sidewalks and ramps, and prioritizing a commitment to maintain a business model compatible with our community. Since our initial meetings, her team has applied our wishes and concerns to their staging plan for our city. To ensure all of our expectations were met, Elizabeth made herself available to visit each proposed staging site with representatives from our police department and co-compliance. And so I, I really did go to each site, and we looked at, oh, that ramp is here, let's go 10 feet this way. We also have the ability to geofence areas, so if there really is an area that you do not want these, we can geofence those so riders could not end their rides there. The clutter, the photos you saw, none of those were our scooters, and I can't believe those were the only images that were shared. The clutter is a horrendous problem. We recognize that. The operators in this space are very irresponsible in having route operators to properly stage and maintain these vehicles. So I agree with you, and we would help resolve that with employees we hire here locally. I'm happy to open it up to any questions. We have brand-new scooters in San Antonio that are still in their boxes. We would be happy to bring them up. If the ordinance were to go into effect through the pilot program, we would still have several weeks that we would be happy to work with the city on furthering the details of this plan in partnership. And also, we can also reduce the speed of these vehicles to as 10 miles per hour if that's preferred. We have the ability to do that internally on our backend system. So ultimately, there are so many solutions around any of the concerns. Ultimately, as a business owner, this is a tremendous benefit to a community if it's done the right way, and I hope we can work with the City of Tyler. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, are you asking today just for a 30-day pilot program?
Correct. That's, or that's, to my understanding, what was in, in the ordinance that was shared with me last night, that I briefly had the opportunity to look over, but I believe it might have options for, to renewals should everything be going smoothly, and I believe the city also has the ability to remove the permit should anything not be followed. In a 30-day period, I, I have seen in communities, generally a community would never get pushback, public pushback, on something on that short of a timeframe, and it would give everyone the ability to try each other out. And I know you all talked a lot about infrastructure here. No city has perfect infrastructure, believe me. San Antonio was built on cattle trails along the San Antonio River. Our downtown is wonky. But what this does give you the ability is to understand where people are using these, and where people are using these are probably also where they will be walking or biking. And this gives you real data to support funding around real infrastructure in a smart, sustainable way. And I know that's been an issue in San Antonio forever. Well, we want bike lanes here. Where's the data to support that we need them there? This finally gives the cities the ability to understand those needs through a partnership with a company like us.
What, what cities do you currently service?
Currently, we're permitted in San Antonio, Corpus Christi, Laredo, Texas, and then the smaller municipalities, as you're familiar with, Almaz Park and Alma Heights within the greater San Antonio region.
So who operates the Dallas program? Because it's had a lot of publicity lately.
I imagine probably Bird, Lion, Razor, the normal players in the room. We actually selected not to go to Dallas because of how many operators were there. And so sometimes we make decisions based on just being responsible that might not be best for business, but we want this, like I said, I've seen how this can change lives, help people get to places of work. And so if that means us taking a step back, even if it might be a good business decision, we're willing to do so, which, so that's why we're a little tempered. I mean, we're, we're from San Antonio, we're small, we're not out of California, and we're a big fan of Texas, and all of our city friends in Texas, so.
Have you had any liability issues in San Antonio?
We have not had any. We've had tens of thousands of rides, and we were insured and everything's covered per any of the city's requests around that issue.
So do you cover the accidents that occur, the maybe medical expenses of the person on the scooter, and?
There is a terms of service, and so users have to agree to that terms of service, but we do have one to $2 million policy coverage.
Any other questions?
So the largest concern for the officer is, was it the speed?
Yeah, and the safety.
And the safety. And that is also our greatest concern, and we would be happy to, I've presented to high school classes, to rotary groups, I'm happy to, we're happy to do public engagement around helping educate riders on how to properly use these.
Have you talked to UT Tyler?
So we reached out to UT Tyler, and they were open, but they kind of actually wanted to lean on the city from when we spoke to them. And so someone's going to kind of have to take the first step. We generally like working with cities first. We've done that in Laredo. We are permitted to operate 200 scooters in partnership with them over a six-month period. And now we're in discussions with Laredo College. Interesting, they only have 60 dorm rooms for about 8,000 students, and everyone else lives off-campus. There's, so now we're discussing things with them. We have a contract with them that we're going back and forth on right now. So we like working with cities first because we want to serve, you know, in an equitable way as many of the citizens of the entire community. We realize this isn't just for millennials. My father's 80 years old, and he'll use scooters. And so that would be the goal of our company, is we just would prefer to work with all the citizens of the community, not just a reserve-selected, younger audience.
And TJC, have you talked to them?
We've, a lot of the people that Billy, Chief Assistant Yates, sent us, we emailed and called, and this was, Demonte and Akim, my government relations team helped me with this. We heard back from a couple of people, and we didn't hear back from a lot of people. And so it was really hard, working through this process of making sure we're talking to all the right people, and if we could do that in partnership with you all, I think it would be a lot easier.
You know, where I was hoping that this was going, from the gray-haired guy, is the pilot program actually being the schools, being UT Tyler, TJC, for the 30-day period to see how it works, and if it worked out well, then kind of consider the downtown. But it sounds to me like you're wanting to do just the flip side. So is there something that we can do to encourage UT Tyler, TJC to, to do the pilot program, or maybe we don't need to get involved with that, but?
No, I, that's, after hearing this, that's kind of where my thoughts are too. Let's...
Well, and I think also with the downtown revitalization that we're looking at, maybe in the future, we could look at that when we've determined what downtown's going to look like in the next.
In fact, Councilman Sellers makes a point that in staff deliberations was something we kept coming to, especially for the DBAC area, which is with the build grant that we are currently seeking, it creates the environment for bicycle, scooter, to be separate from the sidewalks, but also to have safety from motor vehicles. So this program actually, especially if we start moving in that direction for our downtown infrastructure, this does, in our opinion, work well for that environment. The current, we, you know, we out and out and did assessment on our sidewalks, especially downtown, and just saw where there are, there's too many opportunities for spills, falls that cause a concern. So that was a piece that we were concerned about. And remember, we're not just doing this for Blue Duck. We've also had Glide scooters out of El Paso come visit with us, which you're, you're actually doing is creating a system for future vendors, Blue Duck being one, that would then be able to apply for use of their program in the areas that you designate.
If, so if it was the wish of the, the city to start with UT Tyler, we have seen that is, it is harder to work with universities than it is to work with cities, just it takes, it's a longer process. So if the city could encourage in that process, that would be helpful. And of course, other operators will be interested. Our goal would help, help you all get in front of this to test this in a kind of responsible and controlled environment, rather than just, you know, having operators come in and dump scooters. And if the downtown area is a concern, we could keep it geofenced and not stage any of our scooters in a perimeter that suited the city.
Chief Yates, I've got a question for you. If...
Excuse me, she's, he's got to get to the microphone. Thank you.
If we're limiting the scooters to roadways that have a speed limit at 35 or less, what about the bike lanes that are on those roadways with the higher speed limits? So, and I'm speaking primarily around the University of Texas area where we've got bike lanes and so on that are on those roadways that have higher speed limits than that. Would they be allowed in the bike lanes?
No, sir, they would not. It has to be 35 miles an hour or below.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, yeah, that, that does bring up something, if it's around the, the university area, and if they do show some interest, you know, then it's like crossing Old Olive Road as well.
Right.
And so doing, because there's some large student housing there.
If, if they were to travel, I'm not sure the speed limit's on Old Olive Road where it intersects with the university. If they were to, if the speed limit is lower than 35, they can ride on it, but once they get to an intersection where that's higher than 35, they have to use the crosswalk or whatever's available there to cross over, then reengage back with the, the normal street.
Well, I was thinking also about the ability for them to access from the university to the restaurant. to the restaurants that are their own university, but the speed limit on universities, 55 miles an hour, so.
Yes, sir. They would have to use a sidewalk there.
Okay. Thank you.
It, I think there's sidewalks down at those restaurants, right?
Yes, sir. I believe so.
I'm inclined to make sure we open it up to all three colleges.
Right.
TJC, Texas College, and University of Texas. And I would like our staff to encourage that with those entities, because I think that would be a good starting point to gauge the interest. You know, it's not, I was in San Diego, a couple, couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago, and my daughter-in-law and I, we got some, right? But it was around a huge park, huge park area, that went from shopping to along the riverfront and whatnot, but there were like 10-foot-wide trails, so there's plenty of room for walking and biking and those scooters. And it got us to the, to the restaurant system a lot faster than me having to walk 30 minutes, so that was nice. But, so, a lot of our areas in our community, and you also referenced San Antonio, and I respect that, and you also mentioned something that the price of downtown parking, getting employees there, we have a free parking garage that's, there's 300 spaces open, okay? So we're not really experiencing the same urbanization issues that a San Antonio would get in your employees to your restaurants. So what I would suggest is let's work with the universities. Let's encourage the use, because I, there definitely is, I think, a public demand for this, especially from the younger people. So I'd like to see us really promote a pilot project, and then see where it grows in the future. Nothing like having some positive results around students at the college level to actually increase traffic patterns and increase more usage. But it is something that would have to be, I think, needs to be started, and I'll, I'll support that at those three institutions, and I'll personally...
Would the local university be able to do it without the entire system doing it? Could the Tyler?
Well, does UT Austin have, allow scooters on their campus?
Again, Austin is another city like Dallas.
Yeah, so we, I mean, it's pretty...
We've avoided.
Right, but how about University of Texas at San Antonio?
Well, so we're working with A&amp;M in Laredo, and we've had the ability to work with them specifically outside of the system. So we'll, we'll need to look into that.
Right. And if it's an A&amp;M system that you're working with, and you're outside of the system, then you ought to be able to do that.
Exactly. So it's possible. We would love the support if that is the direction of the city, that we can all stay on the same page, to move, help you all move this forward, so it doesn't get stuck.
And I'd be happy to talk to Dr. Mahia at TJC and try to move it along, so it doesn't get stagnant. But, but I agree that that's part of the direction to go.
Because I'd like to see it get started in the community. I think, you know, we talk about safety on the scooters and whatnot, and I respect everyone from that point of view, but there is also a certain level of people, they can handle it, and a lot of people will make that choice. And I know we need to provide the safest environment, but some people will make that decision that they want to be on a scooter. And so I don't want to take that right away from them. But I do think we need to start a little slower here and move forward with the universities. And we'll support that. I'll support that. And so I don't know the format of what O3 vote looks like, Mr. City Manager.
You could, as far as just with the adoption of the ordinance prohibiting shared active transportation systems from operating on public roadways and sidewalks within the City of Tyler, would be, as far as staff's recommendation at this point. As different things work out with the university, and if there's perhaps adaption or change that needs to occur to the ordinance, we can bring you back to that.
And I think there would, because, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not against even saying in a motion that we need to a little expand. Well, then, why don't you, why don't you come up? Yeah. State your name and...
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm Sharon Roberts. Yes, the ordinance carves out, already carves out, the universities, colleges, and the village at Cumberland. So it was written specifically to carve out those entities. They will not be under the ban, and the ban is simply put in place as a stopgap for us, so that as we move forward, if we determine different areas of town where we do want alternative transportation, we will then amend the ordinance again and put the regulations in place at that time when we're ready to go.
So is, like, for UT, that they have, if it's the entire UT campus, then they own property on either side of Old Elm?
Yes, sir. That, the...
So they have to cross?
Yes, your vote today will not impair their ability to move forward with their own agreement with any company.
Yeah, to move across that.
That's correct. Yeah. It was written that way on purpose.
Okay, good. So that's, that's good clarification. Thank you.
And the other reason we would also recommend that you put, adopt that ordinance as far as on the prohibition pieces, without a prohibition, actually it doesn't, there is nothing that restricts these scooter companies to come, coming in and providing services. You know, Blue Duck, Glide, the ones we have visited with have been very good vendors and that, and operators, in that they want to have a partnership with the city. But there have been others that are, they will just come in and start offering the service.
Yeah, that's what's happened in Dallas and in Austin. So when we look at those two examples, that's, they didn't have any regulations in place.
Right, and I'm just, I'm just throwing out a statement here. I'm assuming that while Tyler didn't get just a lot of those large companies coming in and doing it, is they probably looked at the demand factor and didn't think the demand was going to be there. And so that's why some of the smaller entrepreneurial-type operations are looking at coming to Tyler to do, to see if there is a market for them as well. So, so that's why we probably avoided just the large influx of large scooter companies. I think when I was in San Diego, there was a selection of about six or something. And the problem was, for me at my age, was trying to get the right app to get, to buy one. I had to load up all these apps and stuff, so. But, so that's good. So as long as they can move all around UT, that would be good. Do you all have any other questions?
No. But it's Ms. Houston, right? I don't want you to leave here discouraged, okay? We just, we got, we have to take small steps. So what I'd like to, and I assume what I'm, what I'm, with this motion, I'm making a motion to deny O3?
No, to approve O3.
So we have, what I think I've heard is a motion to adopt an ordinance prohibiting shared active transportation systems from operating on public roadways and sidewalks within the City of Tyler, and to direct staff to continue to work on alternative pilot programs to include all colleges and universities in Tyler with the opportunity to participate in those pilot programs. Is that...
Maybe we could say to encourage them to participate?
To encourage them.
Yeah, and then I would also, and Sharon's comment, I want to make sure is noted as well, that there's some other street crossings that may occur if, you know, UT owns both sides, like of Old Elm, for example, so that...
And there may need to be modification, Councilman Westbrook brought up the point about for, on university, there is the restaurants on the other side and ability, so there could be modification to the ordinance as we work out, especially with universities, on what is the best meth, what's the best method to kind of keep them in that university area?
Right.
And so there may be some things that come back to you all in that thing.
Well, that was just my one concern, was that if we worked with the campuses, I certainly wouldn't want, you know, if someone went just off property line, that the city would have been punished to the company. And I was going to mention that while, I understand the prohibition in the meantime, the cities who've had the issues have just chosen not to address them. But other cities where companies came in, they've impounded those vehicles. And so I believe, if not permitted, you all would still have the ability to impound the large companies' vehicles, even without the prohibition. But that's...
We don't want to do that. If we have a choice, we don't want to do that.
So my motion is to approve O1.
O3.
In O1, there is a choice of two things for you to do.
It's O3.
One, to approve the pilot, or one, to approve the ordinance that prohibits the shared transportation. And then with the condition that you direct staff to continue to work on alternative pilot programs.
What she said.
Can I just say, that's my motion?
You all understand that. I'm going to state it again. You all understand that.
Yes, please do.
You just need a second.
Say it again.
Make sure, Councilman Warren, I'm stating with you. The motion should be to, a motion to adopt an ordinance prohibiting shared active transportation systems from operating on public roadways and sidewalks in the City of Tyler, and to direct staff to continue to work on alternative pilot programs that encourage all colleges and universities in Tyler to participate in said programs.
Amen, sister. That's abortion.
And I'll second.
And we have a second from Westbrook.
And Ms. Houston, we do want you to continue to pursue this. It's just, we've got a lot going on downtown right now, and maybe in the future it would work out for you.
Well, then I look forward to continue working with you all. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we would like to...
Can I ask one question, Ms. Houston? Travis Hunt, Travis Hunt, how old is Travis Hunt?
Um, late twenties?
Okay, no, it could be the son of a Travis Hunt that I know then. So anyway, just curious.
He's a great guy. He actually has managed deer populations before, which gives him a really interesting ability to understand population, the health of what he's taking care of, where they're going. So it was a clear level, and he's just been a huge asset to us.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I want to point out that if we may take O4, M1, M2, and M3, and tell the story about all those, because they're very interrelated, and Amber and I are going to tag-team these items. But if we could go through them, it probably would make more sense on these items, and then we can go, and you can ask questions on the individual items, if that's okay.
Okay, then what, then what, I am not going to be in the room for M1 or M2.
Oh, okay.
So let's, if you want to do that, I'm comfortable with that, and I'll go ahead and step out.
Yeah, it's fine, just let it out. It's just the story kind of rolls into...
Well, perhaps the story piece goes in, but then the action pieces, in which he can step out for M1 and M2 after, after your presentation component.
Okay.
And then that begins with the... I think I'd be more, I think I'd be more comfortable to step it out, though.
Okay.
And that would be fine with me, because I don't want to create any...
For all of the items, or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. So I will turn it over to Mayor Prochey.
So just to clarify, we'll go through the presentations of these items, but then we'll, we'll vote on them each individually?
Correct.
Is that, okay. Okay. All right, so let me get started on the first item. What we're looking at today is creation of a Main Street Board. The City of Tyler doesn't currently have a Main Street Board, so let me talk about the history a little bit. In 1994, the Heart of Tyler, who you know, the nonprofit organization that works closely with the city for the Main Street program, started and became certified in 1994. And then fast forward, we've had various agreements with that nonprofit, nonprofit organization throughout the years, as many of you know and have worked with Heart of Tyler and have even been on that board. In 2017, we, we no longer had, a contract expired, we no longer had a relationship. We still obviously worked together on many projects, but it started a dialogue and a conversation that, you know, downtown is transforming and rapidly, and there are a lot of things going on downtown, and a lot of things that the city is going to be economically and physically involved in, and how can we better support that? And in looking at other cities and best practices, a Main Street Board is really the way to solidify not only our relationship with Heart of Tyler by allowing them to serve on that board, but really to say, this is the board that is the sounding board for the City of Tyler, to say, when we have issues downtown, maybe even the scooter issues, things like that, that the board would be responsible for, and that they could address to make, to really air out issues and really make logical decisions for the council to consider. So, you know, really what we're asking today is to develop this Main Street Board. Here's a number of different things that the board would participate in. One of the main things that we'll be proposing today is a downtown revitalization, revitalization grant program, and Amber's going to speak a little bit more about that. The other thing I want to say about the board, it's not very different from the other, others that we've set up in the city. It would be seven regular voting members, two of which, in order to bridge our relationship with Heart of Tyler, would be Heart of Tyler executive board members, so that they could come and serve on the board. And then also, any residents, business owners, or property owners, or individuals who are interested in preservation could also participate on the board. The other thing is that Heart of Tyler has been the support for downtown in four very important pillars, and that's been economic vitality. They've had a design group, they've had an organization and promotion groups as well. So they have a very big, robust volunteer group. They put on a lot of special events downtown, and we want to continue to support that and vice versa. So this, again, really solidifies our relationship by saying, this is how we're going to work together. And then we later have a Heart of Tyler agreement that we're going to get into. So what we're asking you all today is to approve and authorize by ordinance the City of Tyler to create this Main Street Board. And I'll turn it over to Amber, so she can talk a little bit more in detail about the revitalization grant, which will be a main component of the board's responsibility.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm going to speak about the downtown revitalization grant. So originally, downtown did have a facade grant that was facilitated through Neighborhood Services, but that ceased in 2015. The new grant we're asking, it will be facilitated by the City of Tyler and Main Street Board. What you see on the right is actually the last recipient of the facade grant, which was the People's Petroleum Building, which, you know, has done wonderful things, and is actually 100% occupied now, starting from that original grant that the city held with. The boundary will be the D-back area, which is Gentry to Front and Palace to Beckham. So the grant's main goal, of course, is to encourage economic development within the downtown area, to create downtown as a destination, and to also increase the businesses and the local vitality of it. Where we'll be increasing this with the occupancy of downtown, addressing safety issues, improving downtown aesthetics and building facades, and actually extending the built life of our existing environment. And so with this, you know, there's a lot of opportunities with the historic aspect of it, with downtown being the heart of Tyler. That's where most of our historic buildings are. And coming into getting a historic building, there's sometimes some aspects of it that the developer didn't foresee. And so with this grant, it actually extends beyond the facade. It goes down into life, safety code compliance, which is fire suppression, ADA compliance, HVAC system, and also going into historic reconstruction. And you can also, it still goes to, beyond to the facade, so you're able to look at facade improvements, lighting, signage, and you have it. What you have is the ability for investors to come and see additional incentives to take on these historic properties, to maintain the identity of what downtown is, and not look at it as if we're going to destroy it and build a whole new one, but we'll be able to keep the Tyler's identity. And so with this, the main provisions of the grant is that it's a 50-50 project. So we have, we, not to exceed 10,000, so they're able to come and do a 20,000 project, but get reimbursed up to 10,000. Of course, this is going to go into where the, the property owner is going to be encouraged to do additional improvement. So it's going to be probably beyond a 20,000 grant, but we'll be able to do reimbursement for up to 10%. We do have a caveat that it has to start within 60 days of the... We do have a caveat that it has to start within 60 days of the application approval, and that has to be finished with 180 days, which there are some in the application, some caveats in the application that they can extend for a deadline, extend the deadline if so happens. Of funding, of course, this will be made out from the city hotels, occupancy tax, and Heart of Tyler, which is a great partnership that we are starting. 20,000 of it was already actually raised in this fiscal year through a Main Street fundraiser event and Heart of Tyler donations. We do have some supplemental requests and some budget items in right now. And if all approved, we'll be able to offer $80,000 for reinvestment projects in this new fiscal year. So we, with the word getting out that we are trying to build up our toolbox and incentives, and this grant is on the horizon, we've had multiple property owners come and speak about it, asking me when it will start. And three of the major ones in downtown are the New York Store, the Levine's Building, and the Tyler Theater. So these are all projects that are wanting to get started and take advantage of this grant and that are, would be huge catalyst projects for the east and south part of the downtown area. And that including, there's been multiple others that are really excited about this opportunity and coming to me and having, asking if there's any incentives that they can help bring Tyler back to what it used to be. So I'm going to step, give this back over to Stephanie to talk about the
Can I ask her?
Oh, yes.
So Heart of Tyler will help fund this grant process, but Heart of Tyler is still a separate nonprofit?
Correct, yes. And we'll dive into that a little bit after she speaks about the lease. We'll talk about the agreement. But yes, they will commit money to the grant or other downtown projects, but also will be a standalone nonprofit that will just be a partnership with us.
All right, so just moving along the, as the story goes, the other issue is that our downtown property where we currently are, which is the Main Street Gallery, our lease, we've had a 10-year lease. If you can believe, we've been at that location for 10 years. So it's time for us to move on and possibly look at opportunities for that. And again, what we did with that project was look at, well, what are other cities doing? And what are some best practices? We visited a few other cities, and we actually brought in Visit Tyler at that point. City of Denton was a city that we spent almost a day in. We've looked at other cities as well. But we wanted to create a situation, and this has really been outlined in the Tyler First Plan, to have a vibrant downtown visitor center. And so, and so with the idea of our lease being up, we looked at, how could we, how could we do this in better partner, creating a bigger presence on the downtown square, the actual proper square? And so we started, started talking to the Plaza Tower and the things that they were doing there and had some lease space available on the first floor and began discussion and negotiations on that property. So what we're looking at doing is partnering with the Visit Tyler offices, as well as creating a much bigger, robust, larger retail store and visitor center that will be located in the bottom floor of the Plaza Tower along, so it goes along with this lease. We'll have a podcasting studio, a radio studio, really trying to create more of a vibrant gathering space for our tourists. They'll be able to hit the retail shop, as well as the coffee shop and the brewery and all those things that are going to be located in the bottom of the Plaza Tower. So we saw this as, again, a next iteration of growing up into a bigger, better facility. So we're excited about that. Really, we are staying within the confines of both the Visit Tyler budget as well as the Main Street budget. So we're, with this lease agreement that we worked out, we're only asking in our next year's budget for a small amount of increase, but it will be covered by our current budget amount. And it is a 10-year lease that we're looking at.
Stephanie, I do have a question about the other partner, too. Isn't Sport Tyler moving, isn't that the plan to move them over along with Visit Tyler, too?
Thank you, Bob, for pointing that out. It's also Sport Tyler, it's the Visit Tyler group, but it's also Heart of Tyler as well. So Heart of Tyler is currently officeing in a building on Broadway. So they're, they're going to combine all efforts and also assist with the lease payment.
Okay.
And have any square feet?
Oh.
Ask.
I don't have that number readily available, Linda, but I can send it to you. Sorry about that. Want to say it's over seven, yeah, I think it's over 7,000 square feet. The actual gallery, though, will be transitioning to the atrium area, if you're familiar with that, in the Plaza Tower. They're completely redoing that. So that area will be all, all gallery. So it's going to change up the way we office and have that facility. Okay, so I'm actually, we've got one more item. I'm going to turn it over to Amber to just talk about the Heart of Tyler agreement. And then we can answer some additional questions after that.
As I stated earlier, we are going into a new agreement with Heart of Tyler. This is more establishing our partnership. The original lease was, agreement was signed in 2008, which expired in 2018. And it was the only nonprofit that was, it still is, that's truly dedicated solely to downtown Tyler. And when Heart of Tyler was created in 97, they created the Main Street Designation for Tyler. And they came underneath the city for about 10 years and then, excuse me, and then have now became a standalone nonprofit. So this is really the agreement, just kind of showcasing exactly what the city will be agreeing to, what Heart of Tyler will be agreeing to, how we work together, but still be standalone entities. A lot of projects that have been coming up this year that Heart of Tyler and Main Street Department have already been working closely together with is Hit the Bricks, which is every second Saturday, Tunes at Noon, every Thursday on the square, shameless plug, it's tomorrow. East Texas Exhibit, which we've partnered with all the colleges. We did a huge cleanup in the downtown area. Dinner on the Bricks, which is the fundraiser for the grant. And of course, Gallery Main Street Exhibits. So run through this, pretty much what the city will be agreeing to, that we will still maintain the funding for the Main Street program, as well as the Main Street Director. We would support with advisory support to Heart of Tyler Executive Board, assist in Heart of Tyler in developing their own strategic plan that will go into what the Main Street Board's strategic plan is. So it would be basically a partner strategic plan that aligns with the overall city's strategic plan for downtown. We will, the city will maintain all national and state Main Street Designation reporting and also contribute to at least 5,000 of the, to the grant or other projects, which is outlined in our budget. And the Heart of Tyler would agree to maintain its 501(c)(3) nonprofit status, contribute to at least 10,000 to the grant or to other projects, and then also help with the fees for the awards medals for downtown, certification fees, and also provide 50% of the fees for the Main Street Director to attend the national conference in giving training to the board. And then also, they will still maintain their own fundraising to, to help with their operational So our next steps, now that you've heard the story of everything that we've been doing, is once we get, if this does be approved, the Main Street Board members, we will start opening up those for applications and get that appointed. Then grant applications will be open, and we would ask for those to be due August 1st to align with the fiscal year. And then also, we are looking to going forth and looking at establishing a national historic district in the downtown area, which doesn't impose any restrictions or any additional guidelines for the area. It specifically just allows them to apply for state and federal tax credits through Texas Historical Commission. So we're just trying to, again, beef up our toolbox that we have for, for incentives
So I do have a question about the, a clarification about the funding. So the funding's going to come from proceeds from the hot taxes, is that correct? And from fundraising efforts from Heart of Tyler?
Correct. So from, from our budget, we've already outlined a budget item that comes out of Heart of Tyler, hot, hot tax, excuse me, for that. And then Heart of Tyler will gain their own fundraising that will go into the same pot.
Okay.
So let's kind of go back over each of those different items, starting with the Main Street or the downtown board, the Main Street Board. There we go. So with the Main Street Board, this is, this will, this will be a citizen-appointed board by the council. Any questions that the council has related to this, to this item?
No. I move to approve O five.
Okay, motion by Warren. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by McGee. Any discussion? Linda, did you have a question?
No.
No. Hearing none. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Move on to M one.
Do you have any questions on M one?
Any question?
M one is really more of a presentation item so that you all were aware of what was happening with the grant and that it would be a part of the Main Street Board's responsibility.
It'll be part of the budget that, as far as the fiscal year, the fiscal year '20 budget will include that in your hotel occupancy tax fund for, to, as far as the funding available for this, if grant applications are received and reviewed and deemed appropriate.
I think it's a great program, and I think it's creative funding like we were talking about earlier, so I like it.
Yes.
You mentioned Gentry to front. What's going to happen at Gentry?
Gentry is just the border of our downtown, which we call the D-back area. It's just an area that is designated as the downtown.
But nothing's going to be built at Gentry.
I'm sorry.
Nothing is going to be built at Gentry.
No, but they can make application if they're within that area. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
Move to approve M one.
Okay, I've got a motion by Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed by like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. M two.
So M two is the, is the lease for the Plaza Tower. Do you have any questions on that item?
Well, if I can, Councilman Sellers asked about the square footage and went back and looked at the lease agreement. The square footage will be 4,375 square feet for space-wise. There is also an additional 600 square feet of storage that they're providing us in the basement of the building for Visit Tyler materials.
And I'll just add to that, city manager, that the additional gallery area that's in the atrium wasn't, we don't pay for that space, but they're allowing us to use it. So that's where we kind of got the calculation for the larger size.
So will there be room for expansion when you guys are super successful?
There's lots of floors. So you never know what could happen.
Move to approve M two.
One, one second. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You mentioned that it's a collaborative effort, correct? Who all is collaborating with this? Are you talking about the three areas that we're going to, that's going to be in there? The visitors, the gallery, and all that? Or is it outside people that's going to collaborate?
Well, there's also outside people. So Heart of Tyler, the nonprofit organization, would have a location and office in there. Visit Tyler, their offices would also be located there, plus the visitor center. And then our Main Street and Liberty Hall would be housed there.
So they'll pay part of that $75,000 in
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. All of that would be
And that part is what?
Yes, ma'am.
The third of that?
It's really much more than a third. It's probably a little over half.
Yeah, because we have a lot more staff. It may be for instance, that there's a lot more staff.
Right.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, point of order. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I think Don
Second from McGee. Now, further discussion, go ahead.
You know, one thing, I just, I don't have a question as much as a statement. And, and, you know, the way that it has existed for the past 10 years is that, you know, these groups have worked in the same building as the Chamber. So you've got this connection. And you've got the Chamber, you've got the TEDC, you've got Sport Tyler, you've got the CVB, you've got everything that's in the same building. And the one thing that I would really want to encourage in this new plan is that we don't create a disconnect. You know, you've got City Hall, you've got Chamber, you've got TEDC. Now you're going to have a group that's in the plaza. I just want to make sure that we don't create a problem and that we all stay connected and move everything forward.
Yes, we agree ideally.
I'd go to support that because that was one of the, the main reasons for success is it's a one-stop shop. You can get immediate information and feedback from any of those entities right there in buildings. So I agree. Maintain the lines of communication.
Yeah.
I'm also hoping that being directed on the square, creating that full-on visitor center will increase that as well through the community aspect.
Okay, any further questions? Any further discussion? I've got a motion and a second. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. M three.
Any questions?
So we have a new service agreement with Heart of Tyler. For, since 2007, the city has had agreements with Heart of Tyler in different forms and fashion. With this one especially, they are, you know, about two years ago, they went off to really try to develop more on their own agreement. And this kind of brings kind of that greater connections between the city and Heart of Tyler with the revised agreement you have before you today.
Move to approve M three.
Okay, got a motion by McGee. Do I have a second? Second by McKeller. Any further discussion or comments? I agree, I like the focused efforts of, of having a united front focusing just on the downtown area. It's exciting. It really is. Okay, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed by like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to think, I want to personally thank Amber. She's been turning and burning the last year. She, she's only been here in that position for years, so she's done a great job with all of these projects, so.
Amber, thank you for your efforts.
Just really want to commend her for that.
I think the mayor left.
We'll take just a minute, Jim. Please, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you for doing it. Go right in there.
Again, good morning, Mayor and Council. I think it's still morning. Tyler Water Utilities is pleased to have partnered with local contractors and engineering firms. This does allow Tyler Water Utilities to address emergencies, challenges, and consent decree items in an expeditious manner. On page 44 of the Consent Decree, section 62, completion of work and remedial measures plan identifies over 8,000 manholes. And as the inspections and work has went forward, there's been 28 or 2,800 additional manholes added. In section 63 of the Consent Decree, it also identifies the components needed for a number of manholes that have been or will be remediated. As outlined in the Consent Decree, this is going to be an ongoing process. We are requesting two things from you today. We're requesting that you approve a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds from future debt. We're also requesting that you would consider allowing bond funds related to the Consent Decree to be used to reimburse A.E. Schul and Company as a part of their own called contract for Consent Decree work.
Questions?
Any questions for, on this item? From Jim?
No.
Okay. Motion by Sellers, a second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes?
Sorry, second by
McGee. He said, Westbrook said it, too. Thank you, Mayor Council. Thank you. All right, M five.
Good morning. Item M five is a request to approve the construction contract for the 2019 water line replacement project. This is part of our annual program to address issues within the water distribution system in advance of the Engineering Department's annual asphalt overlay program. This is the program where we make repairs to the existing water lines. We replace two-inch water lines where those are in existence, or we make minor extensions so that we can eliminate dead ends within the water distribution system. eliminate dead ends within the water distribution system. This program, this 2019 water line replacement project, is going to be addressing the water lines that will be included with the 2020 overlay. So, we're trying to do the water line work in advance, a year in advance of the overlay program. So, this project was publicly advertised, and bids were open on July the 9th, we did receive three bids. WM Miller Construction was the low bidder at $2,099,727.75, and we are asking that you award this construction contract to WM Miller.
And so the overlays will be done after?
Correct. These streets represent the streets that will be addressed with next year's overlay.
Yeah, great. So, that way they'll be protected, once we do that overlay, from any sort of removal of pipe later, right?
That's correct.
And you've assessed the pipes in these areas and know they need to be?
Correct. Again, these are either two-inch water lines that we know are located throughout our system, and so we take this opportunity before we do the overlay to go ahead and replace those two-inch water lines. But we also rely on the service center staff to let us know when they have particular areas that have had multiple repairs, and we make those repairs as part of this contract as well.
Great. So, there is a, there is a replacement program in place currently that really has nothing to do with overlays?
That is correct, for two-inch water lines. Dr. Johnson, you want to come talk about just some of the work on that piece?
I think we've identified $1 million a year, is that correct? And so this is a combination of two years' worth of funds, is that correct? Yes.
Do you want us to kind of?
Yeah. So, are water lines that need to be replaced that have nothing to do with overlays being addressed? Mr. Moore, which is the operations manager, has put together a two-inch replacement, water line replacement program, and he's identified for the next few years areas that need to be addressed. And then, if those areas are known to be addressed, and we are going to either, we're going to overlay those streets, we want to do it prior to the overlay of the street. That's correct as well, right? Yes, we don't want to have to come back and dig up a new street, that's what we're trying to prevent. Right.
Now, but for some of those, it's kind of the, so you have the two-inch water lines, which are some of the smaller residential lines, and then you have some of the larger water lines that really probably kind of go along with this one that also have to be replaced. So, kind of the difference in kind of some of the replacement programs and projects we have.
Right. Yeah, the water line replacement program does not just include two-inch lines. Right, okay.
Move to approve M5.
Second.
Motion by Warren, a second by Westbrook, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. We are now to board appointments, and we have one board appointment. Cassandra, would you just describe it, what we're doing?
Yes, sir. Today, we're requesting that the City Council consider approving a nomination to the Tyler House Sales Tax Corporation Board from District Number Three. At the time, we're requesting that Councilmember McKeller, she would like to request that John Walton be appointed to the board.
Mr. Mayor, and Council, and City Manager, Mr. Pastor John Walton actually works under the bridge, he's pastor under the bridge, one of his primary interests is, of course, the homelessness, which as a matter of fact is mine as well. He works with the regular citizens, we're there every week, I work closely with the veterans that are homeless, and I've asked that the council would appoint Pastor John Walton to that board.
Okay, there we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations to Mr. Walton.
He's in the audience.
Okay, good. And now we are on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda, as printed.
Motion by Sellers, a second by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We are adjourned.